Welcome, everyone. I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, August 30, 2016, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, Pasadena, 1515 Cherry Brook, at 5:35 PM. Is that right?
Yes.
Board members present are Ms. Vicky Morgan, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mrs. Maris El Kiana, and myself, Nelda Sullivan. There are no board members absent. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation will be led by Mr. Kenny Fernandez, and Mr. Jack Bailey will lead us in the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity that you give us each and every day. Thank you for this opportunity to start off a great school year. Please be with our administration, our teachers, staff members, all the volunteers, and of course, our students. Please, if you could, give us a blessing for passing a high school and the loss of the student that was killed this past weekend. Heavenly Father, please watch over our school district. Please watch over us as we lead this district into a new school year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge with a national flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the state flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
There is no policy committee meeting tonight, and we'll just do the personnel in executive session. The board will adjourn to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer/employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071 to consult with the district's attorney concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district, under the Code of Professional Responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Opens Meeting Act, when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplating litigation or a settlement offer. For the 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM.
Maybe we can have some better. I'm gonna tell them my name there.
I do, I do. But then I come back to it. But it's just... It's like, man, I was timing up. What you know we want?
It's nice to see such a great crowd here. At this time, the board will reconvene in the open session. And the first item is a discussion of budget and proposed tax rate, and Dr. Powell is going to address that.
Yes, board members, as you know, we've worked very diligently on the budget for the 2016-2017 school year. You've participated in many a budget workshop and discussion regarding the budget. Nina Conway, and then, of course, Mr. Pachosik. John Pachosik has worked very diligently on it as well and provided information to you, and they're here tonight if there's any further questions. But tonight is the opportunity for any public comments to be made. We've had one public hearing already, or any board discussion to take place before we approve the budget and a later agenda item. So if there's anyone at this time that would like to speak regarding the budget, we'd like for you to come forward. If there's any discussion among the board, I know you've had many opportunities to discuss it and ask questions, and you've done that, so if there's any other questions or comments at this time, otherwise, we can move forward.
I would like to call attention to the display in front of us. These are awards for the financial groups within our district that work so very hard to make sure that every penny of our tax dollar is spent in the appropriate way, and to allow us to bring the best possible education to each and every student of our district. So if you've not had an opportunity to look at these, I encourage you at the end of the meeting to look at them. Some of them are repetitively for as long as 10 years. So those people within our district who have made all of this possible, would you please stand and let us recognize you?
And we're gonna have special recognition, but I think John and Nina, if you want to stand at this time, just so we can recognize you as Ms. Sullivan has asked. Thank you all. We're gonna have special recognition where we go over each of those awards. We even received an award as late as this week, so we're excited about that.
As far as the budget goes, I do want to thank John and Nina for their leadership and the entire administration for bringing us a budget again that we can work with, and that gives our teachers, all of our employees, a raise, and I know that's a wonderful feeling as a board member. So thank you all for all the work that you put into this budget.
The next item we have is a public hearing on community school.
I think we're gonna ask Mr. Schwan, is there anything you want to say, or we're just here to see if anyone wants to speak regarding it? We just love to hear from you, Mr. Schwan.
Yes, we do.
If you'd just come up and say hello.
Each year, we apply to the state for optional flexible funding for the community program, and part of the requirement for that is that we have a public hearing on community schools to give the public any opportunity, they want you to say something about it. So that's what this is about.
So if there's anyone that wants to speak to that, Mr. Schwan is here, and we are here to hear those comments at this time, just a requirement that we have in order to move forward.
And tell us how many students had the pleasure of graduating from community school.
Total, I think we've had pretty close to 700.
Oh, that's wonderful.
When we started that program, we had no idea how big the walls needed to be, put all those pictures up, did we?
Yeah, we need more room.
Would you send a request to that to the Facilities Department?
I'll take it, yes, ma'am. One morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwan. We will now have special recognition.
And board members, I'm gonna ask John Pachosik, the Associate Superintendent of Business and Finance, to come forward, and he will do some introductions as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Powell. It's my pleasure to introduce those individuals who are responsible for this table full of recognition this evening, and if you would come up to the front when I call you, please. Executive Director of Business and Services, Nina Conway. Also, in our County Department, we have Lori Pruitt, Staff Accountant, and our graphic designer that helped very much on the report. We have Jade Wise from the Publications Department.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Not yet.
And with that, I'll turn back to you, Dr. Powell.
All right. I'm gonna say a few more words, because with John and his leadership and this team that he just introduced, I want everyone in the crowd to know that for the past several years, the Business Office here in PISD has been recognized by the Association of School Business Officials International, ASBO, and the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, for excellence in the preparation and the issuance of our annual budget and the comprehensive annual financial report. They have as many acronyms as educators, CAFR. Nina Conway, the Executive Director, and Lori Pruitt, who you just met, Staff Accountant, and Jade Wise, our Graphic Designer, are all instrumental in preparing the materials that we have to submit, and of course, help to not only report that, but enhance our financial accountability and transparency as well, as strengthen the district's presentation for bond issuance and bond ratings. One of the awards that you see here tonight is ASBO's Certificate of Excellence Award. Just so you know, that was received for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ending August 31, 2015, and it's the district's third year for that award. One of the other ASBO awards up here are the Meritorious Budget Award for 1516. That's the 14th consecutive year PISD has earned that prestigious honor. And additionally, the district received GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the second consecutive year for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, ending August 31, 2015. The GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is also up here, was received for the second consecutive year for the 1516 annual budget document. These awards reflect the commitment of the governing body and staff to meet the highest principles of governmental budgeting and financial transparency, and both of the documents that were submitted are excellent tools that can be used for financial planning and communication devices for internal and external stakeholders. When I mention that we received an award this week, finally, the past several years, the Business Office has earned the District Leadership Circle Award from the Texas Comptroller, and Pasadena ISD had a four-year winning streak of earning the gold level status, and then they earned the upgraded platinum financial transparency award in 2014 and 2015. The Comptroller's Office has now changed the recognition program to be called Transparency Stars, and we were just notified this week that we will be receiving that award, recognizing local governments for going above and beyond in their transparency efforts. So Pasadena ISD has recently, again, earned the honorary distinction of Transparency Star, and just to let you know, to this date, only 11 districts in Texas have received this honor. So that's huge. I think that deserves a "whoo." Setting the bar for financial transparency extremely high, thank you to this team. Pasadena ISD is being recognized for providing citizens with a clear picture of the district's spending information, audit reports, budgets, and other financial reports. So a huge thank you to the entire team, and we are so very proud of the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Fantastic.
That's it for special recognition.
We will have many more special recognitions in the months to come as our kids gear up and get going, but that's it for tonight.
Leanne, I mean Dan, the...
Hey, you.
This award is not about spending money or hoarding money. It's about managing the money that the state gives us, which isn't a whole lot, and I... Great job, Finance Department, because it's... You're managing the money. You're doing a good job. And sometimes, people think we get a lot of money, sometimes, they think we spend too much money, but we're not doing that. Those people over there are managing our money where we can't open the doors and turn the lights on, is all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Our next item on the agenda is public comments. I have four individuals who signed up to speak, and all of the topics are related to 1600 Avenue M. So normally, on board policy, we allow three individuals to speak regarding one subject. Since all four of you have signed up to speak on the same subject, is there a possibility that three of you can come forth and speak, and each individual will be allowed five minutes to speak? Or do you feel that it's necessary for all four of you to speak in order to get the message across?
You need all four, please.
You need all four?
Please.
All right. I will go above policy. I know this is a very important issue for you, as well as for each member of our community, as well as the school board. So each one of you will be allowed to speak five minutes. Mrs. Morgan will be the timekeeper. When you're down to one minute, she will hold up her hand and let you know that it's time. So we'll start off with Victoria Acosta. Would you please come to the microphone, please?
My name's Victoria Acosta, and I'm a sophomore at South Houston High School. I've been knowing Karen for five years. Her death affected me in a negative way. Losing a friend is not easy. It is hard and difficult to understand what happened to her. I miss her so much, and I will never forget Karen always being a happy girl. The building on 1600 Avenue M has been abandoned for a long time. It invites crime at a place where students to go and do whatever they want. It might be boarded up and have locks, but the students jump over the gate to smoke and do illegal things. Students leave school through G-Hall. More security police are needed in the school. During lunch, students would go and smoke. I would see a group of kids leave. City officials believe the building is safe, but the conditions of the apartments are a temptation for students to skip. I would definitely consider going to the early building college that's being built next to the school, but it's so close to the apartment complex, and it's scary. I need to feel safe and not have a fear to go to school. I don't skip school, and I have friends that do, and I don't want them doing that. I want them to be safe and have an education. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And for those of you that don't know, the subject that she's speaking about is the horrible death of one of our students, and so they're here today to speak regarding that situation. Thank you, Victoria. Now, Maria Perez.
Hi, my name is Maria Perez, and I'm a senior at South Houston High School. I first want to start off by saying that I really appreciate the effort of the school in enforcing the ID rule. I know that kids don't like it, but eventually, students will get used to it. And I also wanted to thank you for making changes to the campus to make it safer for the students and making it harder for students to skip class, but it makes me sad that Karen had to die for the school to enforce the rules. I hope Karen did not die in vain, and I hope the school board makes the right decision about 1600 Avenue M, so that another tragedy doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Next is Natalie Guzman.
It's actually Natalie, but...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hello, my name is Natalia Guzman, and I'm a 1969 graduate of South Houston High School. Go Trojans! That was the same year that that apartment complex was built, in 1969. That was 47 years ago. It was a simpler time then, of course. There might have been students that skipped and left campus. I wasn't one of those students, okay? I would have gotten in trouble at home had I done that. I studied often and had to go to summer school sometimes because history and geometry were not my forte. I just had to go to summer school. I studied... It really was a simpler time. No cell phones, Facebook, texting to interrupt our social time, our study time. Social media has changed all of that. Students are able to communicate with each other instantly, and this is really what happened with this situation. But the times there are changing. Who would have thought that in 2016, an early college campus was to be built literally across the street from this inhitable, not secure, abandoned building at 1600 Avenue A... Avenue M? Who would have known that a hurricane named Ike would have damaged that building even further than what it is? Now, no one can live there. It's abandoned, and believe me, it's not secure. It's obvious. The times there are changing. Where a career in technology school was built for those students that didn't want to go... That wanted to get into the workforce before deciding college, I applaud PISD for that. I think that's awesome. You guys are amazing. You guys have always provided innovative programs to meet the needs of their students, and I thank you for that, and I know Communities and Schools is one of those programs that Harris County Department of Education uses for GED students. I mean, that's another plus for this school district. I applaud you. I believe PISD will continue to do right by its students. I believe that, with all my heart, and that's why I'm here. For the creative financial team, wow, bravo. You guys did some amazing things, and I think maybe you can become creative with us and figure out how PISD could possibly negotiate the purchase of 1600 Avenue M to create a center for community or educational purpose to honor Karen Perez. I didn't know Karen, but I could have easily been Karen, you know? I'll end with this. Karen Perez needs to be remembered not as a South Houston student that was murdered at an abandoned apartment complex 800 feet from South Houston High School, 800 feet, but rather, a young lady who empowered the community after a senseless killing to come together so current and future students will have a safe learning environment inside and out of those halls. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak.
And we have one more individual. First name is Rudy, and would you give me your last name?
Riquenyo.
Thank you, sir. You have five minutes.
Give me a second to sit up here. And just to piggyback off that point, congratulations to PISD for all your hard work. I know it takes behind-the-scenes work to make things like this happen. These things don't happen by accident. There's somebody behind the scenes making sure this type of organization, such as PISD, can flourish and, I guess, provide opportunities for students like me. My name is Rudy Riquenyo. I graduated from South Houston, class of 2012, and God willing, I would graduate from the University of Texas at Austin this December. The road to graduation wasn't an easy one, but this district provided me the educational foundation, which was essential for me. Pearl Hall Elementary, Queens Intermediate, and South Houston High School hold a special place in my heart. That's where I met all the teachers that made those profound impacts that changed... That had that impact that changed the direction of my life, and I believe that. I'd like to begin by acknowledging, thanking the school board for their service and hard work. Being an elected official takes sacrifice and great responsibility. I'm gonna be candid, what's my concerns about, as an alumni and as someone whose organization focuses on preparing high school students for college? Excuse me, I am a little nervous. We all know what took place at the building in front of the school exactly three months ago. What's important is how us as a community come back from this, how we are resilient. And I'll start off by mentioning these three points. I think, number one, it starts with the parents. As difficult as it is to say, it is paramount that parents get involved with their children's education and development. This is too often said, but never practiced. Let this be a lesson to us all, that it starts in the home. Those relationships are invaluable, yet there are some things that can be outside the parent's control. Sometimes, a parent can do everything possible and fall short. I'm talking from my own family experience, of course. My mom didn't know a lick of English, but she always knew how important it was to be involved in our education, even if it meant just showing up and making sure we're attending class. Number two, what's next for South Houston High School? And that's an important question. Typically, South Houston isn't the high school to have the parents involved, and we know that there's a void in the representation that parents take. Sometimes, that can be a language barrier, and I can talk from experience, because my parents, and as much as they wanted to be involved, it was hard for them to be involved. Language barriers, or, you know, whatever you call it, them not being familiar with the process is also significant. So back to that question, you know, what's next for South Houston High School? And I've talked to administrators, coaches, teachers about the building and the problems that it brings, and then sometimes, you know, it is out of the control of the teachers and the administrators. Sometimes, kids are gonna do what kids do. But it's important that we're resilient and that we are proactive in encountering and facing these challenges. This summer, we arranged a meeting with some of the administration here, and they mentioned the possibility of fencing around the high school. That's great news. Also mentioned the possibility of partnering with PISD Police and the city police, which is also great news. You can never have enough monitoring. These efforts, as small as they may appear, they speak volumes to people who actually care about the community, who are embedded in this process. So I guess what we're asking for the school board is, we want to know what the school is gonna do to prevent this from happening again. That's paramount, and it's important to us that, for myself, when I come back, I want to make sure that each kid has that same educational opportunity and that... And I'm a little off track here, but I ask you that you take a drive down to high school and to see if you can look at that building and say that it just doesn't fit, right? And with the whole, the new school coming in there, it's just the strategic missions, all of that will not be whole if that building is allowed to be what it is. But back to the efforts, I mean, any of those small efforts can speak volumes to our community, and we just want to make sure that this doesn't happen again, because as long as that building stands, as long as that building stands, it can happen, and that's the truth. And number three, why is this building so important to me? And I guess it is symbolic. I have a personal connection to that building. I grew up there before my parents were able to afford a house, and I can tell you the reality from when I graduated, that going to school there and growing up around there, it will expose you to the drug heads and to the drug dealers. That is important to... I can't stress that point enough, that area that has that, that is present there. And finally, most importantly, you, finally, I'm asking that you view this building holistically to everything that you're trying to accomplish with South Houston High School, that this is just a single piece, that it stains all of the beautiful homes of the hard-working families. It deters the educational mission of the high school. It dilutes the future of the early college that is planned to go there. It is a constant reminder of the pain endured throughout our community. It is therefore that I ask that the district and school board consider buying this property to advance an educational purpose. This space can create jobs. It can advance the school's reach, and it's an investment, not only in the school, but in the community. I ask that this proposition make fiscal sense to the board and that they take it with high consideration. If it doesn't, then I ask that the district look at innovative ways to improve student safety and prevent suicides to the best of their ability.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments that you've provided to the board, and I can assure all of you that spoke tonight that Julie has not been forgotten. Karen. Karen, I'm sorry. We'll move along with our regular agenda. The next item on our agenda for tonight is the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is second, made by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Kiana. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion passes. The next item is our personnel section.
Madam President, I move that we approve the addenda pages A through F of the Personnel Section.
Motion made by Mrs. Morgan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Mrs. Morgan, would you introduce those individuals?
It would be my honor. Is Susanna Armendres, is she present?
She's not here.
Okay. She has been named Specialist 21st Century Community Learning Center Family Engagement. And when you see her, give us, give her our best wishes. Tiffany Davis, Tiffany, are you here? Hi Tiffany. Tiffany has been named Coordinator 21st Century Family Engagement Specialist. And congratulations. Do you have family with you?
I do. I have my students and I have my working people here.
Very good. Congratulations. Donna Lopez, is Donna here? Hi Donna. Donna has been named Diagnostician. And Donna, do you have family with you?
I do. I have my mom, my aunt, my cousin, sister-in-law, and of course, my husband and my DHR family.
Awesome. Awesome. Congratulations. And it's Deanna. I didn't have my glasses on. I'm sorry. Lori Muirhead, Lori. Hi Lori. Lori has been named Instructional Materials Digital Manager, big title. And we certainly congratulate you. And did you bring family with you?
I did. I brought my husband Rick, my mother, Loma Brown, and Chris on himself, and Melissa with the DHR family.
Awesome. Congratulations on your new position.
Lori, you left too quick.
So I loved every minute of it.
Thank you.
Christopher Allen Puente, Christopher, are you here? Congratulations. Christopher has been named Secondary ESL Specialist. And did you bring family with you?
It's my CCS family.
Good. Congratulations. Finally, I don't believe that this person is here, Sandra Thomas. Are you in the audience? Sandra has been named Grant Specialist Behavior Response Team. And we certainly wish her well in her new position, and please offer our congratulations to her. And that concludes the addenda pages.
Thank you very much. If you're following along with the agenda, item number two has been deleted and pulled from tonight's meeting. Item number three is Certified Personnel, and that is for information only. And we move along to the educational section. Consideration and possible approval of 2016, 2017 high school graduation dates, times, and locations.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Something that it's about, I don't know.
The motion carries. For those of you that came strictly for the personnel issues within our district...
We have some tired people from the first week of school, so I saw some faces there.
We will give you an excuse to exit the meeting if you'd like.
Or you're welcome to stay.
Oh, we'd love to have you stay if you'd like to stay.
Karen Riquenyo?
Mr. Riquenyo, Rudy Riquenyo. I have your email, sir. We've been in contact before, and I'll follow up with you via email, okay? Is it still the same address? Okay. Is that the point of contact for your group, and then you can share out with others? Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Sure, thank you. Do you want some water?
Sure.
Yes, oh, that's right. That's right. Nice to meet you.
Okay, I think we've cleared through the first item on the educational section. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of partnership support agreement with communities and schools Southeast Harris County for the 2016-2017 school year.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. The next item is consideration and possible approval of the application for a general TEA waiver for staff development for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion passed. The next item is consideration and possible approval of continuation of the Stutchberry Elementary After-School Program.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say, good job, Alita and Ms. Waller, for getting this back, because I've had people ask me about this, so, great job on that.
Thank you for the credit.
Not yet.
We have, we have a motion in a second, and there have been some comments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is consideration and possible approval of Professional Development Services for Crucial Conversations, Tools for Talking When Stakes Are High, from an inter-local agreement with Region 4 Education Service Center.
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say that I had talked to one board member that had a question about this, and campuses were paying for this out of their own budgets. And then Tracy Goodwin, who had some monies left from this school year, worked with our budget office, and so we are going to cover this as a district for these individuals. We're trying to do all that we can to help our appraisers of our teachers and staff to implement T-Tests with fidelity and coach teachers as they go through that new process and make it as user-friendly as possible, and we really think this will help.
Did we vote on that?
Not yet.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Next item, six, consideration and possible approval of the 2016-17 interlocal contract agreement for education services at the Academic and Behavior School East between Harris County Department of Education and Pasadena Independent School District.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing those, none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Item seven, consideration and possible approval of the 2016-17 contract agreement between Avondale House and the Pasadena Independent School District.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion is carried. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of the 2016-2017 music therapy interlocal contract agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Pasadena Independent School District.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
Can you tell me a little bit more about this, Karen, or is there anybody that...
Karen and Solis will be able to articulate that better.
Just checking. Currently, we have nine students who get approximately 30 minutes per month of music therapy. And so because we only have nine, we don't need to employ a full-time music therapist. So we contract with Harris County, and they come in and provide the services.
At $12,000 a year, is that what the...
$12,000 a year, yes.
And for nine students?
For nine students.
Okay. Is this a part of their IEPs? Is that...
Yes, ma'am. It's based on an evaluation.
Okay. And how do they evaluate these kids to know that they need music therapy?
If a parent comes in and requests music therapy, it's usually our students with autism. We will have Harris County come in and do a music therapy evaluation to determine if music helps them learn how to relax or calm down, de-escalate. And so based on the outcome of the evaluation, they'll recommend if it's going to be beneficial for the child, and then they write an IEP for that, and it goes to art.
Very good. Thank you.
Is it just once a month?
Currently, we have the trainer in district two days a month because we have nine students, and so she divides her day up between the three campuses.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this something that requires parent action, like during the month every other time, or...
No, when they go to art...
The child is not only getting 30 minutes a month, right?
At this time, what the child is getting is 30 minutes direct.
From the school.
From the music therapist.
Right.
And then throughout the course of their school day, when they go to music, they may have IEP goals that they work on within the music class. But the music therapy is very specific to direct service with the child. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion is carried. The next item is consideration and possible approval of HISD School Health and Related Services, SHARS, which is SHARs, interlocal agreement for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
We did have a date on the agreement on page one that was incorrect, so the one that you'll be signing this evening will be dated with the correct date.
Which is?
August 30th, I'm assuming, is the correct...
31st.
31st.
So is this our first year into it?
I don't believe so. We did make... Okay, you want to come to the mic? Thank you, Gloria.
If you recall, when we took in the SHARs billing ourselves, then we didn't really have an electronic system to be able to bill it straight to the, the department that funds that. And so we negotiated the contract with HISD, which is very, very minimal for the return that we get on SHARs. And so we have had it now for eight years.
Yes, a long time.
It's been, it's been a long time. And the, the amount, give or take, plus or minus 10, the amount of, of the fee that we pay has not changed over that time.
The reason why I ask is because we're renewing this for three consecutive years. Where are we at? Am I reading that wrong on the first page? It'll be automatically renewed annually?
Under the term section.
What's that?
I was telling her where to find it. It's under the term section. So is, is it in the middle of the three-year, or do we know where we're at on that? Because it says, like Mr. Fernandez said, it says it'll be automatically renewed annually for three consecutive years. We usually bring it annually.
We bring it every single year to you.
Just to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. I, I think I had the same question last year.
You probably did. We probably need to change that, but the, what that does is it locks the fee.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Is there any other questions for Gloria? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, the motion's carried. Next item is consideration and possible approval of the 2016-17 contract agreement between Shallow Treatment Center and Pasadena Independent School District.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
This is still for one student, correct?
And we have several openings.
I think it's five students, but one residential is where you're getting the one.
Okay, that's what I meant, yeah. So we had reduced the number of children that were there. We had five, and then we had one that transferred residential up, up to six.
Okay. Very good.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion is carried. Consideration and possible approval of the 2016-17 contract agreement between Stetson and Associates and Pasadena Independent School District.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion is carried. Item number 12, consideration and possible approval for the 2016-17 interlocal contract agreement between University of Houston Clear Lake and Pasadena Independent School District.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion is carried. Item 13, consideration and possible approval of sole source purchase with Power School for the renewal of our annual maintenance for the grade speed system for the 2016-2017 school year.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, and I brought this up. Mr. Allen, and I talked to Steve before, but is there anything out there that we're moving to, to where this can kind of all be combined as far as the grade speed, Lawson, Mizuni, Chancery?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't see that happening soon. And the reason is, is because each one of those products are sort of very specific. And, and grade speed might not, the grade, the grade book might not seem like it's, it's very specific, but, but they are. And once you kind of get a grade book working the way the district needs it to work, then you pretty much stay with that. And, and what happens is when you find these products, for instance, you might find a student information system that would have a grade book in it. But then it'd be very rudimentary, and it wouldn't offer the sophistication that we need to do, you know, the things we've done. Like I noticed in here, you had, what's the maximum, what's an A4 basic, what's an A4, you know, if you're advanced placement like that. So, so I don't really see that happening soon.
Okay. I mean, just...
Can I just add to that? I'm sorry for interrupting. There has been a committee for the last year, and there's a committee ongoing, looking at a new SMS. We wish that we would find something that could do all those things that grade speed does. So they're evaluating for that, and that is kind of a dream to have one product, but we haven't seen anything yet that would meet that need.
And I, and I will be working with that team that's looking at the new student information system. So, so we'll keep that in mind.
Okay. It, it just seems like it would be something that would make a, a teacher, you know, all in one, the all-in-one package type of thing.
Well, from the, from the teacher's perspective, a teacher is looking at it sort of like it's all-in-one.
Or not a teacher, but I guess, you know, teacher has one piece of the pie while the administration has the other piece, and I, I guess that's just how I, how I see it.
No, from a teacher's perspective, you know, the grade book, the grade book is, is linked to Power School.
Okay.
You see? So, so that's all linked right now. So from the teacher's perspective, she, she or she would just enter into the grade book, and then it would go on into student information system. So even though we, you know, we, we buy them in pieces, one of the things we do make sure of is we make sure that they, they interoperate, and, and that's seamless. So we don't want a teacher to go to grade speed and go over to student information system, and so, so that doesn't occur.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item 14, consideration and possible approval... Consideration and possible approval of sole source maintenance agreement for the Info-Lawson System for 2016-17 school year.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number 17. I'm sorry, item number 15. Consideration and possible approval of sole source purchase for the renewal of the Mizuni Application Annual Maintenance for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number 16. Consideration and possible approval for multiple grant awards in corresponding interlocal agreement with HCD.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. Is there any discussion?
Good grants.
Awesome.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number 17. Consideration and possible approval for the Pasadena Memorial High School to travel to Washington DC for the HOSA Future Health Professionals Leadership Academy September the 17th through the 20th, 2016.
Some move?
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Motion's passed. Item number 18. Consideration and possible approval for the J. Frank Dobie High School Debate Team Members to travel to the 2016 Holy Cross Navy and Old Gold Debate and Speech Exhibition on September the 29th through October the 2nd, 2016 in New Orleans, Louisiana.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion's passed. There's not any student achievements listed in our book, but we know that there's constant achievement by many, many students within our district. So with school just getting started... Pardon me. Those will be brought forward at the next meeting. Policy update and renew, their review, there is none. And then we go to the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for July 2016.
I move that we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number two, under this financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendments for August 2016.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number three, under the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of the 2016-17 budget.
I move that we... Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. Is there any discussion? A special thanks to John and all of his crew for the hard work. All in favor of the budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion passed. Number four. Consideration and possible approval of renewal of interlocal agreement with Tasbe for Unemployment Compensation Program for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is... Yes.
I'm sorry. How is this estimated?
We're talking about the unemployment. John, do you want to come up and talk about how that's estimated?
This is just the administrative services fee that Tasbe charges us for administering the program. When the unemployment claims are filed through Tasbe, they pay the claims, and they send us backup billing of all the individuals who were paid. And then we in turn reimburse Tasbe for those amounts, but for the administration of paying those claims, that's what this $7,000 is for.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Any other questions for the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number five. Consideration and possible approval of GASB 54 Fund Balance Resolutions.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's passed. And moving on to, excuse me, operations section. Consideration and possible approval of Change Order Number 01 for the New Dobie Ninth Grade Campus Site Package Project.
Some move?
Motion by Mrs. Morgan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fernandez.
Always good to get money back.
Yes.
Always. Is there any discussion regarding this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. The motion's passed. Item number two. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 004 for the New Dobie High School's Ninth Grade Campus Project.
Some move?
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's passed. Number three. Consideration and possible approval of blanket electrical easements for the New Pomeroy Elementary School Replacement Project.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's passed. Number four. Consideration and possible approval for the blanket electrical easements for the New L.F. Smith Elementary School Replacement Project.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. The motion's passed. Number five. Consideration and possible approval of the adoption of prevailing wage rates reflected in Exhibit A and for use on all PISD facility projects.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion?
I have an observation. You know, these are pretty interesting rates.
Yeah.
One thing that just stuck out, jumped out at me was is the, the lay carpet pays $20 an hour, and a guy that handles steel erection and all this stuff makes $19.
Yeah.
Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but that's the rate